I'd like to call the Select Board and Wage and Personnel Board meeting on Monday, February 10th, 2025, 5:31 PM here at the Lakeville Police Station. Lake Kim is recording this meeting. Is there anybody here recording? You. All right. With that, can we all rise for a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, go pass. Oh, wrong timeframe, sorry. Okay, that was bad. Nice to see everybody. I just wanted to bring your attention to a suggestion that was made by one of our residents. For those that are watching at home might not necessarily know when they tune in what agenda item we're on. So Member Fabian has graciously brought us our, I don't know what we call it, is it our volleyball scorecard? Or our agenda scorecard?
Yeah, pretty much.
So...
Agenda counter, I don't know.
So that our members from the audience will be able to see exactly what agenda item we are on. Very much thank you for that. For all other boards and committees, we're gonna leave it here if anyone else wants to borrow it. I'm gonna leave it right in the drawer over there. Excellent. It was a good suggestion. Member Donahue will not be present this evening. She let me know earlier today, so we will miss her. We do have a few Select Board announcements to make here. There are still a few positions for the annual election that no one has pulled papers for to run. The deadline to pull these nomination papers is February 12th, which is Wednesday of this week. And the deadline to return them is February 14th, which is Friday. If you're interested in running, which I know there's quite a few of you out there that are just sitting on that fence, and we are gonna push you over if we can, please reach out to the Town Clerk's office at 508-946-8800. And they can give you information on pulling nomination papers. And if you're interested in any of those positions, you can reach out to any one of the Select Board members or town administrator. And we can answer any questions that you might have if you're on that fence.
Madam Chair, do we have the specific list of open...
I do not, but that list is on the Town Clerk's website. So if you go into the Elections tab on the left and scroll all the way down to the bottom, you'll be able to see the listing. Yes.
I just talked to the Town Clerk a little bit before we came here. One of the positions is going to be filled. One of the candidates, there were two candidates running for one position, so they're gonna withdraw their nomination papers and go to the other one, that was for the Cemetery Commission. So that one's filled. And then there are two Park Commission vacancies that no one has pulled papers for.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The Treasurer Collective would like to remind residents that real estate and personal property taxes are due on February 3rd, 2025. If you have any questions regarding your tax bill, you can contact them at 508-946-8801. The Community Preservation Committee will be holding a public hearing on February 20th at 6:30 PM at the Lakeville Police Station to gather input from the public on community preservation plan. This is, I believe, an annual requirement to hold a public hearing. And if you are interested in learning more about it, of what they do, or even having some suggestions for the plan, to please attend. The Council on Aging is in need of volunteer drivers for the Meals on Wheels delivery program or as an out-of-town medical driver. These are very important programs for our seniors and are only able to run with the help of volunteers. You can volunteer as many or as few days a month as your schedule will allow. And for more information on volunteering, please reach out to the Council on Aging at 508-947-7224. And a little fun fact here, in 1959, former Red Sox star Ted Williams and his partner Al Cassidy purchased land in Lakeville to establish a baseball camp. Ted Williams was a regular participant at the camp over the years and including an annual fundraiser event for the Jimmy Fund. Williams, who spent summers at various locations in Lakeville, was a regular visitor to various establishments while he was in town. All right, anybody else from the Select Board have anything for announcements? Yes?
I was just gonna say regarding the Cemetery Commission, if somebody did want to run, they still can. It's not filled until it's elected. So just because somebody's moved what they want to run for, somebody else can.
For that. No, thank you for that. Yeah, people are dying to get in.
I know.
I had to. I was, yeah, I was waiting for that. Okay, Town Administrator report, Andrew?
Yep, thank you. Just wanna first thank Frank Moniz and his DPW guys. It's kinda something you don't really realize how much they're out there on the roads. The way the storm hit, it was around 11 o'clock at night on Saturday. So I assume those guys, oh, 15 hours, they're probably walking dead today. So it's greatly appreciated, for sure.
They did a great job, yeah.
We recently returned $206,000 in ARPA funds to Plymouth County. They were knocking down our door to get that back. But I shouldn't say it's necessarily a bad thing. They have a project that's gonna benefit the whole county, Public Safety Communications Equipment, so it's not gonna go to waste. Let's see, Community One Stop came out. I know everyone has a lot of ideas, potentials. If anyone has anything, feel free to let me know. I have four or five kinda working potentials. But the deadline's in June, so there's plenty of time.
Would you be able to send us out? I know that you had sent an email on that. If you could just send us the listing of what the opportunities...
Definitely. And also, Lorraine and I, the Chair, attended the South Coast Whale Municipal Briefing on Friday. The start date for South Coast Whale is officially March 24th. So that's actually ahead of, kind of ahead of schedule of what they thought they were gonna do. I think it was May or June. And the last thing, Mike Ellis, myself, and Chris Plonker attended a meeting with the schools today to kinda go over like our first budget meeting, kind of an introductory. I think it goes without saying that the budget is very tight this year, probably more so than the last five to 10 years. So it's gonna take a lot of work from us, the school committee, Free Town, to make it work.
Madam Chair, I just had a quick question though. Now, we've always gotten a binder from the school department for the budget. Will we be getting that again this year?
Yeah, they dropped off...
Four.
Four copies on Friday.
Oh, okay.
I gave one to the Finance Chair, one for myself, one for Mike. I'm gonna have all the copies. Actually, Jack's making the copies. He's gonna get it to us this week.
I have one because I made a bunch of copies, so I took mine home. I made sure I didn't miss anything, and I did miss making one of the charts in color. So as soon as I'm done, I'm gonna do that tomorrow. I'll give you back that binder.
Yeah.
But I definitely want that in hard copy.
So, okay, add a little to that. So the last Regional FinCon, Jack asked like, or stated, I should say, his primary is to go electronic because it's way faster for them to update pages in it. But he said if people still do want paper copies, let them know. But he's gonna default to electronic because then he doesn't have to worry about sending out two sheets of things and having to recollete everything.
No, and I think that's great too, and I don't know what the cost savings would be, you know, in time in preparation of getting the hard binders, but at least if we had one at Town Hall...
Yeah, we'll have one, and then he's gonna print out like five or six extras.
Yeah. Sorry. Maureen, you had something, I'm sorry.
No, no, my question was around officially, did they present the official preliminary budget?
Yes.
And is it the same as, you guys were talking about it in the Regional FinCon, right?
Sort of.
Yeah, it was kinda...
We didn't have a real number for the Regional FinCon. They unveiled it at the school committee.
Got it. Last Wednesday.
The last Wednesday, it's 1.6 million increase over the prior year.
And that represents...
About 11%.
Yep. Both Andrew, Mike Ellis, Chris Plonka, and myself were there because I don't think you got any numbers ahead of time, right?
No.
Now, are we giving them numbers?
We can.
Just when we get there.
Yeah. Yeah, because we haven't seen ours yet either, so once we get our preliminary budget presentation, I'm sure you'll let us know exactly what the landscape's gonna look like.
Yeah, I've tried to kinda give an update on a few times the last week or so. I don't wanna give a hard number right now, but it's not looking too good.
I think we anticipated that, that this was gonna be a really difficult year.
Well, we usually do like a TA number and then a Select Board number, so, you know.
So...
As transparent as we can be on either side to make sure everyone's knowing where we're coming in at, I think.
So through you, Madam Chair. The presentation that Jack did is mostly online. I think all the charts and everything he used are online. But he did say in, I think, three times that, oh, well, we underfunded that last year. So we knew we had a big deficit last year. And like, for example, the one that sticks out in my mind right now is substitutes. And he did say, well, we underfunded that last year. So I'm really curious because we were told that the budget, the $800,000, was taken care of, but I didn't think it was taken care of through underfunding things that shouldn't have been underfunded, so...
Yeah, that, Madam Chair. Just very concerning with all the irregularities in the budget and what's a one-time charge versus, you know, what's gonna be ongoing. Were there discussions about where the extra numbers were coming from specifically?
Yeah, I think it's mostly tied to the, they haven't settled yet the teacher negotiations, but I think they're kind of making assumptions.
And they're building that into this 1.6 increase?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's better than not, I guess.
And I think also the insurance was, and he was counting on it going up. I thought he said 8%, but I think it went up 11.
I think it's double, I think I might, I thought I heard 12.
Maybe.
But I'm not certain. I don't think, it's not final.
Who do they have for insurance?
Maia.
Maia.
They had said, but like, without any increases at all, I think it was just contractual updates, was gonna be a $300,000 increase. Without anything, without insurance, without this new contract, like, that was just fixed costs that they had no control over, which is not a small number.
No, but it's, you know, on the big scheme of things, it's, you know, not devastating.
But, so, Madam Chair, I have a few questions on Andrew's report. First page, "Under continuing to review any and all existing financial policies and other town or city best practices." Can I maybe sit with you? Because I don't wanna be working on the policies that I'm working on if you're working on some of the same ones, so...
Yeah, we haven't really put any pen to paper. We just kind of collected a few different communities.
Okay. And I can give an update when it comes time, but I've just been, because Maureen and I have to book a meeting, which is kinda tough for us, I've just been working with a few people around town to say, hey, does this still apply? Has the law changed? So that I can have that information and set that all up for when Maureen and I actually work together. So there was a couple of other things. The potential tax title auctions. I mean, I know we'll, we'll talk about that, but on the APC, I think one of the properties, one of the addresses, was actually on the street where the water is. I think it's in Clark Shores.
They both are, yep.
Okay, so one, I think, is around the corner, but one is on, and it's one that floods. And one of the, one of the action items for the APC plan is just not to have someone living in those houses if the towns could afford to buy them. So if we already own it, then, and we're gonna sell it, then it perhaps goes against what the action plan is telling us to do, so I just wanna make sure you know that.
Yeah, part of the, of one, part of the game plan, one of them, I forget the addresses, was to potentially demolish the house and then just make a covenant that no one can build anything there.
Yeah, so that would mean we would keep it, right?
Yeah, but we're still kinda game planning it.
Clarification on that. Couldn't we make a covenant and still sell it to increase someone's size of their lot so they could get, you know, in a butter, you know, so they could get like a septic on there or something on their lot and not on this one? And not have to have care and custody of it? Because I always worry when we, you know, have the care and custody, what happens there? Are we trimming it? Are we maintaining it or anything like that? Hopefully for the best of both worlds.
I don't know how that would perk out because last year, you know, three feet of water in the front.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about doing anything on that lot, just using the entire lot's size for the consideration.
I don't know the answers to that question. All I'm saying is that one of the action plans is not to, if at all possible, if there's, you know, municipalities can buy some of the land around the water. So if we have one, then perhaps we should be selling it in that kind of way or not selling it at all, so...
Madam Chair, I have a question that ties into what Member Fabian is saying. We have GIS maps that all our various boards and committees could have access to to prioritize anything on the GIS maps, right? Or is that just too expensive of a proposition to throw one more layer on for like area of opportunity? And that way, when any board or committee starts looking at it, it instantly pops up because obviously we all struggle with communication between boards and committees. You know, there's a lot of people doing duplicative work in different areas. If we could have one just general layer that we, you know, assign, and it's, you know, you have to see these boards and committees because they're interested in this, and then every time those properties come up, it shows it? I think that could be a really useful communication tool for everyone to use, you know, use it the same way. And that way, we would have known, like, oh, let's check with the APC before we even look at this one or, you know, or something like that, because I'm sure we all have little lists.
Sure. Yeah. So I think what's gonna be key going forward is how we place, I hate to put it that way, place like Nancy Darby on the APC. So whether she picks up the liaison spot or she picks up, you know, so that's gonna be a future discussion, so...
I think, if this is the lot, I remember, I'm trying to find on our GIS too, it's a double lot, back-to-back, two streets. So we shouldn't rule out that it's entirely useless because it's possible they could demo one side and build the other side. I was trying to build, pull up the 100-year flood map, but it's being a bit slow right now. So there may be possibilities there.
And we'll talk about this February 24th, maybe, maybe in the first week of March, the latest.
Okay.
So...
So next on the list with the finance team meeting there. I really don't wanna get too far into the enterprise conversation without the Parks Department in front of us because I think that was spoken pretty loudly at the town meeting that folks want the two boards to work together, so I just don't want a whole lot of work to be done just to, whatever. And it has nothing to do with, do we wanna see it? Do we don't wanna see it? What we said we would do was work together, so...
Is it not the TA and the accountant's purview to have all the data ready for those discussions?
Well, all I know is we told the folks at town meeting that we would sit down with the Park Commissioners and discuss it first, so I'm just doing what I said.
We would need that data to have that discussion, would we not? Or else we'd be having a meeting for...
I don't know. There was a discussion, Brian, that, you know, you referenced a couple of weeks ago. If I had known that conversation, you know, I knew that Andrew was going, but to a Parks meeting, but that's what we said. So I don't think we should go too far at all. But in the same respect, if we're going to put de-enterprising on the warrant again, then we need to meet with the parks sooner than later, so...
Sure, but didn't the Chair put that on there?
Yeah, he just kinda put like discussion, I think with, I think he kinda said my name, his name, and G and E's name because that was part of, kinda part of the discussion beforehand. I don't think we're gonna necessarily put this on the spring agenda. It was just kinda like a, almost like a conversation starter to eventually have that conversation. I envisioned probably a March or April joint meeting with the Parks Commission.
Yep.
This 92 number's not meant to scare anyone. It was just like a, an exercise that we just did.
Yep. I just feel like we said we would work together, so I feel like work just meeting at the get-go with the parks and saying, how do you wanna handle it? What do you wanna know? I mean, I have questions of my own, like, who takes over making decisions? If they, if we de-enterprise, who takes over making decisions for park fees? And, you know, so I wanna know what they want for questions too, so I just...
I'm confused. This doesn't say de-enterprising.
No, it doesn't at all.
This is just talking about the chargebacks for the enterprise account, so...
But that's what the conversation was about. And it's obvious the Chair of the Park Commission is in favor, but, you know, if this is something that we all feel is the right thing to do, then I feel like we should not even have all these outside conversations because you can tell there's contention on their own board about it, so...
Madam Chair, this is, as Member Candido said, entirely about indirect costs, which is a state requirement for enterprise accounts, which everybody openly said, we're not doing correctly.
Right.
Now, it appears that the Town Minister and Town Accountant are doing an investigation to say, if we did this correctly, what would this even look like? It doesn't look like there's anything beyond that at this point other than getting budgetary practices in order, or at least understood, to potentially, whatever you say, March, April, to have that conversation of like, hey, if we're staying this way, this is maybe what it's supposed to look like.
I had a comment, if I could. Now, I think Leah and Brian both remember 2020. We ended up suspending all of the bailbacks for them because they were making no money. There was no Clear Pond Park. There was no, no events, no nothing, no leagues for a little while as well. So I know that there was a temporary decrease in that massive spreadsheet that Rita used to keep in order to calculate what that was. I was kinda surprised that it didn't go back in 2021 to what it was prior to COVID.
And to your point, Ms. Garba got at the town meeting and said, we charged a little, but not what we should have been.
Got it.
So it sounds like it's a practice that's gone far beyond any of our time here.
But there was chargebacks. I can't remember specifically.
Right, there were never, you know, but there were never what it should have been, right. But again, you know, if they're home watching right now, they're like, look, they're already talking about it and we're not even in the room. So it's like, I think the first thing we need to do is bring them in so it's not a two-hour meeting and say, this is what we're talking about. What is it that you would like to see us provide? I don't, I don't really see the harm, Brian, in asking five people to come. Maybe they come, maybe they don't. If they don't, then we take it on ourselves, but if they do...
And I simply do not see the connection between trying to establish proper budgetary practices to, oh, we're trying to de-enterprise them. This would come up during our budget meetings whenever those are held, regardless of the state.
Right. I don't know why we're arguing this point.
Because you said, why are we talking about de-enterprising? And we have not been for 10 minutes.
But that's what the park meeting was about, was de-enterprising. How could we not discuss that?
Go back and watch the 23rd. They talk about that concept and they talk about indirect charges.
Right, I did. But even still, even still, the accountant said that it's not illegal what we're doing and a few other things, so maybe they... I feel like...
I wouldn't say that.
Listen.
That's a twisting of words.
I don't understand. Why can't we ask five people to join us before we go any further? I don't understand what the problem is.
We can absolutely have a meeting, but, I mean, I, you know, for the record, I think that our Town Administrator and our accountant, what is, what is Mike's title? You know, meeting with the parks to get the conversation going.
Right.
Because I think this is, you know, fallout from the town meeting, so...
And you know what? There's a whole history. There's people on the Park Commission who, I think out of everybody on the Park Commission right now, only one person was here in 2020 when we made all the changes. So I think there's a lot of information to be shared. And if someone has questions, submit them so that, you know, the Town Administrator can start getting the answers for us. I just don't wanna come in and throw all these numbers at people, having us have the opportunity to ask questions and them not. That's it.
All right, well, this was just a report from the Town Administrator, so no point taken, well...
Right, so, all right, I'm gonna keep going because I have more questions. So I know where you had the conversation with Dana Hanson. So I will say what I have heard them say, what the Congressman has said to me, sitting right next to me. He can't help us like create new funds to contribute to, but if he can get us money to contribute to already existing funds, that's something that's better suited. And he does, no matter what he comes here for, he asks us what we need, which I think is great. But usually, we like to try to put something together too, like regionally, because the last couple of times he's been here, we did a tour of Long Pond. We did, he was actually at the Senior Center, so, you know, he likes to see projects that involve, I think it would be really nice because we had told him that we were working on the addition to the Senior Center. I'm sure he would be really happy to see that because he seemed very concerned that, you know, that we were lacking in some space and whatever, and he seemed very excited about that project. So that would probably be really nice.
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. Are they looking to gather information from us on some of the things that we would like to, so, send you?
I had reached out to Dana Hanson because it came from the Fire Station Building Committee to potentially research federal funds to maybe offset some of the payments upfront, especially for the water line for the new fire station. So that, it was kind of like an open-ended conversation from there. And she said there's like a, I forget what it's called. Brian had sent me a community, some sort of like federal fund.
Oh, I forget the name of it right now.
Yeah, they funded every year. I don't think Lakeville's really taking advantage of it. But it's a difficult process.
So it's competitive? So it's a federal grant?
Yeah, it's like, I don't wanna call it federal, you're marked, but it's something similar.
Community Project Funding Request, is that the one?
Yeah. They generally take a couple of years. There's strings attached to stuff and...
I like, I love the fire station. I think that's a great candidate. But I'd also like to see water infrastructure at Clark Shores.
Yeah, we had talked about that afterwards.
I think that's something that, it's a very unhappy thorn in my side for years. And I'd like to see the people of Clark Shores have some really robust water infrastructure.
Yeah, I can share a USDA communication about Clark Shores that came in Friday afternoon.
Then, I'm curious, met with Frank Moniz and representatives from School Department on the storm event. Did they ask us for help or something?
They had a couple plow drivers down, and so they were just kinda saying, should we cancel school or should we not?
Okay.
Based on the circumstances.
All right.
We kinda said like, it's probably, probably have school, and then all the school districts around us started to cancel.
It's not like some long-term plan that they're asking us to help them with?
Nope.
Okay, all right. And then, I'm actually, under the assessors' update, I'm actually shocked to see that the RFP is going back out again. Are we begging people to get them? You know, we have candidates, so I'm still not sure why we're just not hiring a candidate.
I think it's up to the Board of Assessors to appoint someone, and we can't make them appoint someone, unfortunately.
Well, they can't hire someone, and I mean, if we take a vote and no one wants to hire... and no one wants to hire someone, then, what, are we not gonna have a principal assessor?
Yep.
Yeah, right now, there's no assessor. So, we did have a strong candidate come in, but I don't want to get too much into it.
Yep.
But I think it's a good option.
Okay, okay, um, I think that's it, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Agenda Item Number Four, um, we have some minutes to approve. Did everybody have a chance to look at the Select Board Meeting Minutes of January twenty-seventh? I'll take that as a yes, and I will entertain a motion to approve said minutes. Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Phoebe and I.
Carbone, I, hand it away.
Dave, stand.
And Item Number Five, so I asked this to be put on here. Um, so now that the, uh, vote had passed, uh, for the fire station, this is going to leave our town hall building, um, with an opportunity. So I was, wanted to bring this, this evening to the board, um, to discuss impossible vote on the creation of a Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee. Um, if we were to vote on the creation of it, excellent, and then, um, direct the town administrator to draft a charge in committee makeup, and then bring that back to a future meeting for a vote.
I've got a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I could not find a charge for the original feasibility study for what they gave for criteria originally for the town hall. Does that exist anywhere? I couldn't find it on the website.
In twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah.
Um, I'm pretty sure we did a charge.
Can you see what you can find on that, Andrew?
Yeah.
I, I truly, I do look forward to seeing something, but.
I saw, I'd be able to put my fingers on it?
Probably not.
I have, Madam Chair. I have one from twenty-eleven, I have a police station.
Oh, that's.
Committee charge. I, I do have the public feasibility one from two thousand and six.
No, we're looking for the one.
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah. Let's see if you can find that, um, because I think that will help, you know, in the draft of it, but.
That's when I found the, the extra person that is no longer on the select board listed as select board.
Did that one go, ah, my timelines are all off now. Did that charge even go, or committee part of their town hall go forward where the funds are voted down at town meeting? Or is that after?
Yeah, that was after, this had already been done and created by.
Gotcha.
Sofa Tech.
Soketech.
Soketech, um, prior to that happening, so I think that was like eighty thousand dollars.
Oh, gosh, I don't even remember the amount.
I don't know, but I couldn't find it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I just couldn't find it in order to understand what was already asked of it, compared to, you know, maybe some other questions.
Yeah, it's not included in the, I just found the document that they created in the end, and it's not included as part of the document itself.
I saw that, which is odd.
Yeah.
Because usually they are asking and answering a question in these documents.
Right.
Here's the, here's the ask, here's the answer.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's where I know. When we were discussing it way back in the day.
Yeah, um, I have some stuff going, just so Andrew knows, um, it would be before October fifth, twenty-two, because we've, we created, um, town administrator had created some FAQs back in October of twenty-two, so it should have been before that.
Yeah, the, the document finally is dated September second, twenty-two, which is right in line with before October.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'll entertain a motion, um, to create a Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Um, yeah, so this committee will, it will be part of their charge. Is, is this your intent to have them not just say, okay, the living quarters, we know we can turn into office space? It's gonna be for the entire?
Right, okay. Yeah, makes sense.
Yep. So Andrew can draft, um, a charge with the committee makeup. Um, I know we had a library reuse Subcommittee, um, when we built the library, for, so that I know that that's out there as well. Um, so I think it would be prudent of us to get started on this right away, so we can start to plan.
I agree, someone should be looking at every option, like, you know.
Every option, yep.
What does it take if we take this part of the building down? What if we do, redo just this part and leave the other part open, whatever? Whatever it takes us to.
Yep. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Phoebe and I.
Carbone, I, hand it away.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, would you be able to bring it back on the twenty-fourth? Or would you need to go into March?
Um, twenty-fourth would work, I have.
I just don't want, I know you've got a lot of stuff going on now, but if you could start maybe drafting, and if you get it ready for the twenty-fourth, that would be great.
Yeah, I already have nine or ten different towns and cities, so I'm gonna have like a one of all of those ready to go.
Excellent. You can do a, I was doing a compare and contrast on AI the other week, just to find the differences between multiple documents.
Oh, yeah.
I thought that was actually an actual good use of AI. I, I have documents that I want to compare, tell me what the differences are.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, um, the Select Board, um, can discuss it and possibly vote on the schedule of the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for June ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, there's a timeline here, it looks pretty reasonable to me. Um, we would open the, the warrant this evening if we were to vote on, um, the schedule. Warrant would close on the thirty-first of May, I mean, March. Articles would need to be into town council for review for the April fourth. Um, votes on the article and the final, um, warrant, um, vote would be sometime in April. Um, the legal ad would then go in at sometime in May. Warrant posting would be in May, warrant review sometime at the beginning of June, and then town meeting would be June ninth. So. All right, um, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the schedule for the annual town meeting for June, scheduled for June ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Um, so moved with discussion.
Second. Okay, discussion.
So, um, I know through the last couple of months, we've been saying, oh, this may need to be exactly everything that we're talking about earlier, like, do we bring back another, um, vote for de-enterprising, the Park Commission, whatever? So I feel like there's a lot of lingering warrant articles out there. Um, to my recent recollection, I know the OSRD may or may not happen. Um, there's some kind of a zoning language change that potentially on one of our other permitting issues that we've had, um, there's the issue with not being able to enforce, like, some of the fines and everything, so should we all just send our recollections to Andrew, or just?
And I believe that our town administrator in the past, um, has always just done like a blanket list of potential, and then we vote on each one to put them on the warrant.
Um, yeah, I know for the fall town meeting, we really didn't see them much ahead of time, so I would really love to be able to see them actually written out to not just a list, um.
You mean going to council first and not just a list?
Um, well, I wouldn't mind seeing a list as soon as possible, but then being able to actually see them written out, so that we can each be able to sit down and read them and digest them. Um, but, so going back to the veterans' one for the fall town meeting, so, remember the exemption?
Yes.
Yep, so Maureen had submitted that to Bob. Um, a couple of other people wanted to do it, but they were like, oh, the assessors will do it, so I'm glad you did it, because if you hadn't done it. But my question is, should we all just be submitting our own ideas to the town administrator? Or do we want to, like, talk about it as a board if, um, we all have other ideas before we tax him with writing up all these?
To like vote the ideas in, as opposed to just hand them in? That's not horrible.
I mean, we could just see how it goes, and if it becomes a lot, we could, you know, um.
Well, I, I, I'm on board with that, I know that, um, even, you forgot one, the recall for the regional school district.
Yep.
Um, so we have our standard annual town meeting articles, um, and then we'll probably end up scheduling a special town meeting as well. I don't know that we've never not had one, on the annual. Um, but as discussions come up, if there's law changes or language changes, and obviously those might be, you know, Andrew might say, hi, this could be a potential article. But yeah, if there's any.
What do you mean?
Yeah, so if he, Andrew puts together a draft list, I, I don't know, whatever. One of the meetings, we wanted to fix the earth removal.
Earth removal permit, yep.
I didn't even want to say it, because I can see.
Right, so a lot of these are things that we've talked about, right?
Yep.
But, um, so let's say we all come up with even one that no one's ever talked about, right? So now that's five warrant articles that, you know, we're giving the town administrator. I've. I just, I'm asking the question, especially because I'm working on policies here, too. Does every select board member for going forward just get to say, oh, I'm gonna throw all this on the warrant? Or should the actual select board take a vote and say?
Before it gets on to the warrant.
Before it gets on the warrant, and then, you know, the town administrator's doing a ton of work for something that only one select board member thinks is valuable, let's say. That's just a question.
We don't have to vote the warrant all up, I mean, we could vote to remove something if the board doesn't like it. I'm just looking at the, the calendar here that we were looking at. The other kind of wild card here is, currently, it says to send the articles off to town council on the fourth, then the election's right on the seventh, so then you've got like, potentially any from one to two people just being not included in this whole process.
That's always weird to me.
Yeah.
I was very surprised that I couldn't get any traction for changing the election versus the thing, because I've always found it to be, uh, Brian, your example was the best. It was the day, it was like the day before Brian got elected, and it was town meeting. He's like, sitting there, voting on things that he had nothing to do with.
Yep, nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just a question, especially because I've been working on some of the policies, you know, and I, and I'm like, we could wait and see how it goes, maybe, you know, we all pay attention and we work together, and no one's coming in with their own ideas. Um, and we are working collaboratively as a group, but if there's different people and they're all like, oh, I'm, I want to become a selectman, because I'm gonna put five warrant items going forward. It's just, just a question.
Yeah, I don't think it's a guarantee they get to, but Madam Chair, the warrant, if we use this proposed schedule, the warrant closes on March thirty-first, a Monday. We then send articles to town council on the fourth, that Friday. I mean, there might be no reason why we couldn't literally have a meeting somewhere between there, just to have that, like, let's run through the playcard and vote up-down before we send things off to council.
No, there's, I wanted to take it that much further. So our finance committee, um, they vote recommendations, you know, on money articles. Pretty much, we'll stay away from zoning articles.
You do, yeah.
And they make their, you know, recommendations. I think it might be a good idea if the select board were to do that as well, um, because I would hate for us to have a warrant article on there and then just say, oh, we don't want that on there. And it wasn't, not something that was brought forward by a select board member, but maybe it was something that, you know, our town administrator brought before us, and we said, no, we don't want it on there. Well, I mean, we could use the earth removal thing as a perfect example. So, you know, we all feel like it needs to be changed, so we can all say, take a vote and say, we recommend approving this, so I can see your point.
Right.
Um.
But we might not, we might not support a warrant article. However, a town meeting might support a warrant article.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the hands it would go in, but we could vote a recommendation of whether or not we support the article.
Board-wise, you mean?
Yes. Because our FinCom does it.
Right. Why, was there any reasons, like a statute that we didn't endorse them in the past? Or did we, and I'm just like fading?
Well, I think, uh, as from what I've seen and heard, I think there was only ever three people, so there was only three opinions to pay attention to. I mean, five peoples, a lot of, if everyone starts working individually, it could be a lot of work, and.
Are we all working individually?
I don't know, we're doing a pretty good job.
You know, just trying to get everything in front of the board for discussion in an open meeting, so, but yeah.
For clarity, because I honestly can't remember, even though it's only been a year, when we vote on the articles, is that the actual article language back from town council? Because that's.
No, the, the article, voting on the article to present.
So I don't know, why wouldn't just swap, vote on articles and send articles to town council?
And I think in the past, it was always voted on as one, let's say. So then maybe we do vote on individual.
Madam Chair, so the send articles to town council for review, those are draft articles that go to town council, and basically the TA, you know, drafts them, they go to town council, they check them for legalese, they check them to make sure we're not doing anything we can't do. Then, once town council does all that, then they come back to the board, and the board votes to place the articles on the warrant that have been received from town council. And then the board votes on the final warrant, so, um, but you gotta get those articles to town council before you guys vote on them, because they may come back and say, oh, no, this, this needs all rewording. So then you're gonna have to go back and re-vote them again.
But I think even before that, to even go to town council, I think we might need to have a discussion. Um, so whatever meetings, I would just say that I know we're gonna be scheduling our meetings, um, toward the end of the agenda.
Right.
So let's keep that in mind.
Finalized.
Um, I mean, the warrant closes on the thirty-first, but that does not necessarily mean we can't discuss the articles prior to that.
Close it on the thirtieth, and talk about them the next day and vote on them.
So in the past, there have been some very, um, I don't know what the word is, there's been some select board members who have taken it upon themselves to put all kinds of warrant articles, I guess that's my point. And, you know, should any one select board member be able to just flood the warrant with their own articles without the rest of the?
Checks and balances, right?
I haven't seen that play out, though, what are some examples? I feel like we've always.
I don't want to name names.
Name the articles.
I don't want to.
Okay.
So maybe we institute the practice of our recommendation.
Well, you know what? We just, yeah, we just wait and see what it looks like, and already, most of us are like working with each other and working with Andrew, so we just see how it goes.
And I gotta say that, you know, Member Candido putting that one forward, I was, I don't read like she does, so, um, I know that she finds stuff in.
I have no life, thank you.
No, I would never say that, but I, I do know that you, you're an avid reader, because, you know, the dialogue and, and discussions that we've had, but I didn't even know that that was even out there, so I was glad that that came forward.
Right.
Um, so Madam Chair, I can add another line here, um, select board meet to discuss draft articles, or select board meet to make recommendations on draft articles. So I'll add that in between warrant closes and send articles to town council.
Yes.
I think that would be good.
Madam Chair, do we envision a world, just for your point, that we allow things to go on warrant without the recommendation, though? Because we think it's important for the town to vote on it. Yeah, oh, yeah, so just I want to make clarification, because I do think that's an important distinction. You can, a lot of times when we get articles, it's not, it's not really for us to say, I, it's something that's.
No, it's not.
It's, you know, something.
There's plenty I don't agree with personally, but put for the people. There's plenty I don't agree with personally, but put for the people.
Put for the people, yeah. Okay. So I just want to make sure that we don't squash anything that should go before the people.
And I know that in the past, there have been um proposed articles for the warrant. And they've gone through the process and then got pulled because of, you know, not having information.
Right, yeah.
So that was not, you know, a decision of this board, but, you know.
Do we, I think we're still in discussion, right? Do we have to vote the closure date tonight or is that?
We can change that, too.
Just saying it's seven weeks open, is that, that sounds significantly longer than I remember, but maybe that's.
Specials usually really small.
Oh, that might be what I'm thinking of then.
Moved our official meeting date back to June, we have a longer time period. Before, when it was the second Monday in May, the period was a little shorter.
That makes sense.
Okay, so uh we'll do the tenth. Um, warrant closes on the thirty first. And then um uh warrant um review by select board.
Before the fourth?
Before the fourth? Or we.
Yeah, I'll add a line in between warrant closes March thirty first and we'll back up the send articles to town council, we'll move those down. Once you guys set your meeting dates, I'll be able to firm this up a little better.
And then we can move that April date further out.
Yeah, okay. That works. Excellent.
And so um I have the motion to schedule the annual town meeting for June nine, twenty twenty five, and open the warrant to close on March thirty first, twenty twenty five. We usually close it at three P M.
Three P M today.
Do we have to designate a start time or is that in the warrant?
It's today.
Not the meeting itself on the ninth?
Oh, I think that's part of the.
It's part of the bylaw now. It was changed.
Seven o'clock.
It's the actual bylaw.
It is?
Oh, the time.
Time, seven P M, six P M.
It's seven P M for the.
We always usually do six, seven for the annual, six thirty for the.
I was asking if this would be part of the motion tonight, though.
Oh, well, I can make it. I can make it part of that motion if you wouldn't mind. I'll amend it, my motion to include the seven P M start time.
To schedule the annual town meeting for June nine, twenty twenty five at seven P M and open the warrant to close on March thirty first, twenty twenty five at three P M.
Yes, I like that. Uh, Madam Chair, to Tracy, we're good with the school. We've already cleared it with the school.
I have to, now that you've set the date, I will read out to the school tomorrow.
Got it. All right. Any further discussions? Hearing none, roll please. Baby and I, Carbonee I, Candido I.
Do I?
Okay. Agenda item number seven. Okay, so this was kind of a new one for me.
Discuss impossible vote to sign order of taking and waiver of damages for um Gillian Drive. Jillian, Gillian, I messed that up on town floor too. Gillian, Gillian?
I say Gillian.
Gillian, okay. So the last step in the acceptance of Gillian Drive as a public way is the board um to sign an order of taking and to sign the My Law Plan for recording, which must be done prior to March twelfth. The order of taking is how the town acquires a permanent public way easement on Gillian Drive as well as drainage easements on one of the lots. Town council has submitted the attached order of taking for our signature. So if we are to pursue this, um, they prepared waivers of damages. Should the town, that would be this board, um, want the abutters to sign them. Um, or we can waive them to not sign them.
Madam Chair, I've never heard of that in my life.
Me neither have I. This was a new one for me.
We take roads frequently, semi-frequently.
Every three, four years at least.
Right. Madam Chair, this is the last step in our road acceptance um procedure that was prepared by town council. So if you choose to sign the order of taking, um, that's great. I've got the My Law here for you to sign. If you want to have the abutters sign waivers of damages, which town council did say it's not typical, but it's up to you whether you want to do it, then what would happen is you would not vote the order of taking tonight. You would have to wait until the waivers come back. So we have roughly thirty days for all this to happen.
If the waivers don't come back? Well, because we would need to have all waivers and do we know how many abutters are affected?
There's how many? There's a list here, right? There's a lot. There's like this many.
Nine?
So um, what would happen is the attorney would take these, the attorney for the applicant would take these and have them signed off. And then they would return them to us and then the board could vote on the order of taking and sign it. And then it would have to get up to town council and then they would have to record by March twelve.
Andrew, do you have any idea if we decide not to have the waiver signed? What the issues could be, or concerns would be?
I have an email from town council, um, but I couldn't put it in the packet because it's confidential. But she did say, most towns do not obtain waivers as the benefit to the property owners of having the town assume the cost and liability for maintenance of the roads outweighs any detriment that the abutters may suffer.
I've never had to vote on this, but I just know that I've signed. So. What is the recommendation of our town administrator?
I would say don't do the waiver damages, personally myself.
Do we also have a recommendation from county building inspector?
D P W?
Yeah, I think it would be. D P W, yeah, for the road layout and any other.
Well, it's already been accepted.
Yeah.
So we're already in the process. So this is the last of the.
I remember the acceptance.
This is the legal piece.
I mean, this basically says what? They get a dollar if there's damages? I'm reading it.
One dollar.
I just don't get it.
I feel like I just don't have the pros and cons in front of me. Was this in the last meeting I missed?
Nope.
Should have asked that.
This is the first meeting I was like, okay, we'll put this on and.
So Madam Chair, I would make a suggestion um that if town council had additional info that the board members, even though it's confidential, that the board members. I did not see it if that was the case. I apologize.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I believe I did email them to you.
Okay.
So you could read them.
Okay.
All right, so um, do we want to move this to the next meeting? For vote?
Yeah, I just don't know enough about it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be really close. Because we've got to get it to town council and the town council has to record it immediately the twenty fourth. So that will be six, give them sixteen days.
Oh, it has to be done by the twelfth.
Yeah, I make a motion to not um include the waiver of damages.
Second. All right. Any further discussion?
I'm just not comfortable. I don't know the pros and cons here and I don't, let's see. I see the one, uh, wait, no.
I brought it. She wanted to look at it.
Thank you.
Tracy, you've got the um, I've got the docs from K P on the fourth you sent as well as a follow-up answer to a question. But. I just don't understand it.
All right, so am I gonna go really slow to call the vote?
No, abstain or no, because I just feel like I don't have anything.
All right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll roll. Baby and I, Carbonee I, Candido I.
Abstain.
Okay. Um, don't let us leave unless we sign that My Law.
So now you've got to make a second vote to sign the order of taking in the My Law plan. But I'm worried with My Law, just that motion I have at the bottom that came from town council.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion pursuant to Article thirteen of the November twelfth, twenty twenty four special town meeting to take by eminent domain public way easements on Gillian Drive and any drainage and other easements related thereto for which taking no damages are hereby awarded and to execute an order of taking to accomplish that acquisition.
Sum up.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, roll.
Baby I.
Carbonee I, Candido I.
Do I?
Okay, so we'll sign that My Law. Thank you. Now I know. Should that ever come back up again? All right, agenda item number eight. Um, in front of us are a couple of procurement policy and a procurement policy and a purchasing card policy. This would be our first reading. I'll turn this over to um Andrew, our town administrator, as you had put these together.
Yep, um, so when I came into the position, when I came into the position, um, I'll start with the P card first. So the P card is something that's kind of done more and more often in different communities. When I worked in Virginia, um, both communities I worked in, I saw a huge benefit in it. It's basically a way, it's not, you don't cut a check to someone, you use a credit card instead, it's tax exempt. You get reimbursements on it. Typically, two and a half percent of all purchases come back to the community. So the community I worked in, the reimbursements were a hundred thousand over the course of a fiscal year. Um, and it just essentially allows easy payment. And that's, that's all it really is. Um, what we find frequently now is a lot of trainings through M M A, um, just different conferences, they don't take checks anymore. Um, and so they usually like P cards. That's, that's the new uh, new thing to do is it's basically a credit card. Now, there is room for, I guess, malfeasance and this policy is a way to combat that. In Taunton, there was thirty, thirty P cards all around. I even had one. Um, I only envisioned having one in Lakeville and it's gonna be locked up in the treasurer collector's safe. Um, and this policy essentially outlines how it's handled. And every time you you want it, you have to come in essentially, sign it out. So if anything happens or there's a screw up, we know how to trace it back pretty easily.
That was my, my question to you was that the control factor in that, you know, especially if there was more than one card out there. I mean, and not that, you know, any of the individuals that would have it would, we think would, you know, commit a fraudulent um act. It's just, but what am I want to say? It's like preparing the town for any, you know, potential liability should there be. A situation.
Madam Chair, I have the same question. If we had more than one P card, would they have multiple numbers in them to ensure that we had segregation of duties or or tasks or anything like that? So if we are just planning on having one because of the size of the town, makes sense.
Just the one. I don't see the, the amount of purchases being so high that we can't just have the the one.
Yeah, we had a debit card before.
Yeah, right. We, I think.
Couldn't overspend it because we only put enough money in there for the purchase. Um, the treasurer would move the money into that specific account and then we would make that purchase.
Right. And we have, it's gonna be through Bank of America if we choose to go that way. Everything's free. There's like, there's a free dashboard that kind of sees everything, free cards. Um, they handle the rebates once a year.
How do, how do you, how do we get rebates? Like, how does that?
So they, they calculate how much money you spend in the course of a year and then they cut you a check, usually September.
Because they're taking my money because I'm a Bank of America server and giving it to the.
It's like any credit card essentially. They want you to spend, so.
I know, I just, it would just seem odd to me.
Probably paying a three percent transaction fee that.
And so this is less.
So they make the money there and then hand some back.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the question I had for Andrew was, is all departments, are all departments still like purchasing supplies individually? And I think they are, right?
Yeah.
So I was just curious, if we're gonna tighten this all up, then maybe we should try to buy in bulk too, but.
It's gonna be another policy at some point, but I'm thinking of through the budget, it's kind of organizing all the training budgets in one. And then you would come to H R or town administrator and basically have to explain what training you're gonna go to.
Yeah, and that or procurement, you would have someone dedicated to procurement that would be managing it or, you know, something more centralized than it is today.
Since I've like done bulk buying of supplies, but is there still a benefit to doing it or, you know?
Yeah, definitely there is.
Is it worth doing it all?
My question is, we have one department that buys things in a different way than everyone else. And that's the parks for all of their stuff for like the snack shack and and all that stuff. Would they be subject to this? Because if we're writing a policy, we should try to make sure that it's inclusive of all. So like, yeah.
Honestly, I never thought of that.
Okay.
Um, I can, also it's the first reading, but we can go back and yeah, see if we.
Because I would love to, you know, my cash handling, anywhere where there's cash handling, like um, the, the um, the animal shelter and um, yeah, there's still cash and checks and all those things. So anywhere we can make that because we're paying the um, the, the, the animal hospital and things like that. So if we could pay with P card, I think that would be a benefit because that's where I see a lot of expenses flowing when we have like injured animals. It's like four thousand dollar bills, like that they're, they're paying out and stuff like that.
We don't, I don't know what process parks use, but would a second card that's tied to them somehow be beneficial or are they using cash or checks?
They're using cash in some instances, yes. Um, not checks, but cash, um, and probably cash that hasn't gone through the circuit.
I think they were still using some cash up until a couple of years ago, but I know that um, our treasurer was like, what? So I'm not sure if she's worked on it or plans to work on it, but yeah.
More Q R codes and P cards than than cash would be great.
Well, maybe we start with one card. See how it goes, revisit.
Yeah, and actually the, the way Bank of America handles it, they do a pilot program the first year. They like basically hold your hand through the whole year just to make sure.
Okay.
So.
Well, no, that might be good. And then we can see where the need is greater.
Right, right.
Excellent. All right, so um, can we put this on the twenty fourth?
Yes.
And then this will give everybody ample time to ask their questions and.
Yep. So then the next one is the procurement policy. So when I came on board, um, I was a little shh, kind of surprised to see it was just like a two-page, kind of like a one-page really, policy. It's not really followed uh in any way that I've seen. Um, we really don't do purchase orders for one, the way, the way this.
Yeah, we don't have a purchase order system that was supposed to be implemented in twenty twenty one with Munis. They were supposed to implement purchase order system with Munis and I don't know what happened, but.
We can make purchase orders, but they, they don't look like a purchase order. And then the other one, I'm trying to see. So the way I've seen it handled here the last couple of years is contracts are approved at a select board meeting. This policy says they don't need to be and I don't think that's really how the board envisions it should be. Um, just my first meeting was a zero, a zero dollar change order that was pretty controversial. It was really something that I guess I shouldn't even brought to the board. Um.
I remember.
Yeah. And then just another big one is like, I guess technically the, I would, I would never do this, but the, like the assessor appointment, like of, of a contractor, I don't think it would have to come to the select board.
Under the existing policy.
Under the existing policy, which I don't feel comfortable with. So I think the new policy provides more transparency. So essentially the big change would be anything over fifty thousand has to be approved by the select board.
Anything under fifty thousand would not.
Would not.
Yeah. Um, and that fifty thousand, as you've listed it, um, I didn't see, um, so not to make procurement over fifty thousand. I was hoping to see some language that said, you know, fifty thousand, not for payments of fifty thousand. Like something to say in total, because I know I had heard, and I think it was you, Leah, that said, yeah, fifty thousand. that said, yeah, fifty thousand, was that fifty thousand every year, fifty thousand every quarter?
I actually thought the threshold was lower, but.
Yeah, um, I remember you had said something.
And I thought it was the total contract amount.
Yes, yeah, and that's what you wanted it to be, but that's not what it ended up being, so, like, the total contract amount does not exceed fifty thousand as opposed to, you know, fifty thousand a year for three years, where it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar procurement.
Right, yeah, I can make that more clear in this.
I'm surprised how small this is.
Yeah, it's just the one page, it doesn't really get into like, it's not a procedures document, it's not like a guide. Um, it's more of a, like you said, a memo. So what I, what I did in Taunton is I created, it's probably three times the size of this, but I tried to streamline it down to what more Lakeville I think would need and would like. Um, and there's a few attachments that kind of get into just backup documents that we don't really handle, we don't really do right now.
But the fact that it's contained in one area, so like if I had a question about, you know, the procurement piece on this, I know that it's, you know, it's in here.
Right.
I don't have to go looking for it separately, two clicks and I'm, it's more, too mu, too much for me, more than that, but.
And then another thing is, and I know it drives me and Tracy crazy, is, um, construction procedures, like prevailing wage and everything else. I don't really think it's, it's complicated, it's a lot of moving parts, and I don't think that the average department that just makes a few purchases a year really know what it entails, so I think this policy kind of
Outlines it.
Really makes us have to handhold people until they learn it.
I had one other note and I'm not seeing it. No, I had one I had too. Oh, um, I just wanted to make sure that everything was, um, and I know you said it in here, but I didn't see the language where I was looking for it, um. Under definitions for the chief procurement officer, um, I just wanted to make sure the balances were there, um, for contracts for the select board. And I, I'm sure, sure it's in here and I'm just not seeing it, because this has a lot of stuff to it. There's a lot of sections, so I might be missing it, but it did look to me like it was, like this one pager was doing a little bit where it was cutting some of the select board language out for signing the contracts, or awarding the contracts, rather.
You know, I don't think the original policy mentions really the select board, other than just the headline.
It, the old, old one used to. Uh, the old, old one, and I, I think that one goes back to like twenty seventeen-ish or somewhere around there with, uh, the last big update of, uh, MCPPO, like standards, um, did have, you know, all contracts to be signed by the select board.
There is a section on contract signing, I just don't know the exact, um.
Like I said, it's probably in here and I probably just.
Yeah, it's page.
See that too, I was just looking for it.
Over.
No, I saw it as well.
Page twenty, I think it is.
It's seven hundred?
Seven point two point six.
Awarding and executing the contracts, got it, see ya.
Oh, the last paragraph.
Got it, all right. As long as that doesn't co, conflict with the, um, chief procurement officer. One, that's just my, those are my major comments for this version.
Will bring this one back too, you have something, Brian?
I was just gonna say, I was impressed at the level of detail and all the references to master internal law and such. I think, you know, whenever this does get passed, I hope, um, Andrew's given an opportunity to then like present this to department heads or whoever you think is necessary and go like deep dive into it.
It's a very professional document.
It is, and, um, one thing I was gonna ask is, I don't know if it's, it belongs in the, well, first, the board's opinion, I don't know if it belongs in the policy or not, but I'd really like to see us in a better way publicly document like what contracts were issued and what process was used to get them issued. Was it an RFP?
Like a master file?
RFQ, who bid on it, who was awarded it, and for how long it is.
We can do that, we can set up a tab under the, you know, on the select board page, um, you know, contracts.
Yeah, wherever.
And we'd do it by year or whatever, um, as actually, you just jogged my memory on my other thing.
Making sure all RFPs are on our website for the people of Lakeville to see.
Yep.
That's been like, you know, one of the things that people bring up, I would have bid on that if I knew, I would have bid on that if I knew. So I want to make sure, not only combies, et cetera, et cetera, but we have on our own website, and maybe even that's a use for Facebook, maybe, maybe that's a, that's where people are getting some of their information now, and, you know, something quick, quick little link to it. Um, sends you right to the website, here's our, you know, can you bid on any of these projects, are you qualified? Like, I'd much rather, if, if given the choice, have our local people be able to participate in anything, um, than have someone from other towns.
And we can, and we can, once we get that going, we can make sure that through our announcements, you know, reiterate, you know, two or three times that, you know, this is a practice, this is a practice.
Here, you go to the procurement page, go to the procurement page.
And I, you know, even the ones that are awarded, like, um, remember Candito said that it's, I think it's good for people to at least see. I know that I've seen it on other community, um, pages, I'm like, oh, this is really good, and then I forget to bring it back, but.
So important to involve everyone and make, make sure they know how, you know, we're doing with them.
I had a really cool procurement, I didn't, it wasn't mine, but the city of Taunton had a really good procurement page that really helps it out.
Let's go look at it.
Well, we need to, we don't have the module on our current website, so it's a separate thing.
Separate thing.
We don't have a lot on it.
I know.
City of Taunton.
I emailed you, Brian, about it today.
I saw, I saw.
Um, manager. I will, I will say one thing, the reason why we didn't put them on our, on our website page is you lose control over who has the documents. So if you need to issue an addendum, you don't know who has the documents, that's the only thing, and if only certain people get the document, get the amendment, see, right now, the way it is, is you email, you email in, so then we have your name, your company's name, all the information goes on a, on a sheet, a spreadsheet.
Right.
So if an amendment comes out, you go to the sheet and go, okay, here's the email, here's the email, here's the email, you send out a mass email to everybody that has obtained the documents through you by putting it on the website.
I'm not, I don't think that the, the key here was to put the document on the website, I think it was to put the fact that it's out there.
Yeah, I actually would like the document on the website, and I think a Google, a simple Google sheet would be able to capture anyone's email address if someone was actually thinking on bidding it, um, I think we're, you know.
Would the local people that bid also have the ability to bid through combies? I mean, we, could the page be simply a link to combies?
Could absolutely be a link, but to Tracy's point, she wants to make sure she's capturing if there's a change to be fair to everyone, so.
Cause then you can have a bid protest, and then you gotta saddle over again.
So as long as, as they have access, everybody has, you know, secure access or equal access to participate, so. Okay. Look, I'm gonna go check out your city of Taunton.
It was cool, cause like it was so low main, and she just uploaded a document and just shoots it out to everybody without even a second click, so. You, you not to.
One click, did I hear one?
Yeah.
It's real, it's easy, I, I went and looked at it, but I, I did ask Civic Plus about it, and they were like, no, your website doesn't have that, so.
Probably break it. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll bring these back.
Yeah.
The twenty-fourth. All right, agenda item number nine, um, we have a memorandum of agreement between the town of Lakeville and Massachusetts Labor's District Council of Laborers International Union of North America. North America, okay, AFL, um, CIO, Local twenty-two, um.
Two seventy-two?
Andrew, would you like to take this over, because this is for discussion or possible vote to approve this memorandum?
Yeah, so, um, just some things have dropped off union agreements over the years, and I, I'm not sure why they did. Like, let's, I'll just take it from the top, like, the select board voted to approve the planning board corp job description, but then it was never added to the labor union contract, and I think that was just a slip. You know, and you list out all the positions that are in the union, it just didn't make it.
Huh. Was that after the contract, though?
I think when they, um, finalized it, they just never added it, I don't know why, why it was, but in that same.
No MOU?
This would be the MOU.
No, but it, it never had an MOU?
No. Nope, and in that same contract, it listed out deputy superintendent of streets, that's not a job title in Lakeville, so they are changing it back to deputy DPW director. So that's, those changes. The other one, I also don't know why this happens, um, under a previous HR director, they, um, made a couple of mistakes, they listed out DPW director in one, when it was actually the de, deputy DPW director. They listed out differentials.
And this is all the twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, they listed out differentials, um, incorrectly, and so this is kind of making the edits to those.
So, um, Madam Chair, I may, uh, I'm trying to understand, have we been paying the differentials without a contract?
So I think they've all, trying to, let's see. I believe, I believe so. One of these positions is vacant, um, another one, yeah, they have been, one just retired. So there's really only one incumbent in these, um, positions, it's the highway mechanic.
That's just difficult to know that that's been missed for two years.
But it says it's budgeted for, so how did that?
Everyone kind of assumed.
Cause it's a carry forward, it's in all the spreadsheets.
Right, cause it was, it was voted, so it was in there, but it just never made it back to the, the actual document.
Just for old, uh, stuff, we added those in in the twenty twenty contract, Leah, for the differentials. So I would have assumed either they carried forward and we would have them in there, or they would not carry forward and we wouldn't have been paying them. It's kind of concerning that we were paying for people for something that wasn't in the contract, as far as just a control, um.
Or anything else could have happened.
It's, it's like, I hate to go back to having checklists, you know, for things like this that should be done. So once the, you know, select board votes, um, and, you know, in agreement with the contract, there are certain steps that get taken, and one is that the language gets into the, into the actual agreement, and then the document gets signed. Well, it gets signed and then get, thing gets into the agreement, but I'd hate to.
I mean, it sounds like it was there in twenty twenty and then
Mm-hmm.
not, just missing, and not, is anybody a member of?
Missing and signed by everyone.
Yeah, like.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Lakeville and Massachusetts Labor's District Council of Laborers International Union of North America, AFL, CIO, um, Local twenty-two as presented.
So move, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Baby and I.
Carboni, aye.
Kinda do it.
Aye.
Crazy. All right. Number ten. Discuss.
Look at that.
Double digits.
It's not backwards over there, right?
No.
Double digits, um, discuss the notice received from the Massachusetts, um, State Lottery Commission regarding a keynote monitor at Joe and Chloe Glick Gas at thirty-three Bedford Street, impossible vote to send letter if the board is not in favor of it. So I believe that the lottery commission, um, has, I don't know if it was a request or that they're looking to put this in there. Um, if we, if we object to it, then we need to send a letter, if we don't object, we do nothing. So all of the pertinent information here is, um, which I, you know, had not thought of, um, cause I don't think this has ever come in front of people before.
I don't remember ever doing anything like this.
Sitting here, but, um, but these questions were actually running through my head, like, how many people coming through the door? And, you know, what does this mean, but, um, if this increases the lottery receipts, you know, to the town of Lakeville.
He's getting a nickel on it.
A nickel? Well.
And then if they're standing in the plane, they might be buying more stuff at the convenience store.
Money. All right, so, um.
Do we have to take a vote that we're not opposed?
Or just no action? Just, well, we don't, it doesn't necessarily, we don't have to vote on anything that wasn't really on here. Um, only if we were to not support it, so, no action? All right, flip.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, okay. All right. And agenda item number eleven, um, discuss impossible vote on the request from Red Hand Brewing to alter their hours of operation to allow alcohol to be served on Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven AM to eleven PM. Typically, um, we, well, we had voted, um, and their hours of operation did not include a Monday. But because St. Patrick's Day is falling on a Monday, they would like to extend their hours for that day from eleven AM to eleven, um, PM, so we would have, that would be a vote of the select board. It's a local vote.
This one or every St. Patrick's?
Well, this is the only one in front of us.
They're gonna come for the board every year now?
Cause it's on Monday next year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Brian, so smart.
All right, so I guess I'll get the, um, I'll entertain a motion to allow Red Hand Brewing, um, Company Inc., DBA Red Hand Brewing, to serve alcohol as permitted under their current general on-premise alcohol, all alcohol beverages license on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, which is a Monday, from eleven AM to eleven PM.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Baby and I.
Carboni, aye.
Kinda do it.
Aye, it's lunchtime.
And Madam Chair, um, I did reach out to the police chief, and he reported no incidents there since they've opened.
Oh, well, thank you. Okay, agenda item number twelve, um, discuss impossible vote to award Department of Public Work Services awards for Southeastern Regional Services Group, which is otherwise known as SURGEES. Um, this is something that we do, um, every year, uh, this particular group, uh, will buckle down and try to find the best rates for all those, um, involved, and I think that we've been very successful, um, with pricing or competitive with the pricing purchases, so, um, I will entertain a motion uh, to award the following contracts with pricing as noted, on bid award sheets, all commencing on March first, twenty twenty-five, and expiring February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, and authorize the town administrator to sign award sheets. I'm trying to remember if it was required to state these.
You did.
Okay, I thought so, so the company would be Pacella Enterprises, which would be, um, the permanent trench patch repairs, PJ Keating, SuperPave Hot Mix Asphalt Zone D, Indus Micro Paving, Indus Polymer Modified Crack Sealing Hot Asphalt, what is it, asphalt?
It's filler.
Okay. L A, L A L Construction, Sidewalk Construction and Setting of Curves and Edging, Allstate Rubber Chip Seal, Tascow Structure Work, RM Pacella Grade All Excavator Services, G Lopes Tub Grinding in Maltby, High Production Tree Removal and/or Trimming.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll. Hearing none, roll please.
Fabian, I.
Carboni, I.
And Dido, I.
Day, I.
Agenda item number thirteen. Um, discuss impossible vote to issue letter of support to Verizon regarding Verizon FiOS broadband expansion. So attaches a request for a letter of support from Verizon regarding Verizon FiOS broadband expansion in a sample letter. Um, and I believe if we can, if we can invite, um, our Director of Light Cam, Jose Avinco.
I'm not here to support or oppose this letter, it sounds like a good idea. Um, the only question I would have for Verizon is, does this mean they're putting five G transceivers on poles as their FiOS expansion versus what they've done previously, which is direct to the house, uh, fiber?
So this would jump pole to pole?
Um, it sounds like they're looking to put fiber to the pole, but then five G.
So it jumps to the house?
Perhaps. The, the, the ultimate goal of Comcast and Verizon is to go straight to five G and skip the wired connection, and therefore they don't have to have their customers pay, um, to support Light Cam. That's the concern.
So your concern is if it technically goes wireless and it's no longer transmitted by wire?
Correct.
That negates their agreement to continue to fund any type of cable access?
That's, that's what I believe and most access centers believe, yes.
Two questions, Madam Chair. One, I don't see anything about five G services in here. I don't know if there's another, another source of information. I mean, I see, it says, I just moved my page and I lost it. Uh, expanded Verizon's Fire optic network for broadband, but then I don't, I didn't catch anything else saying they want to terminate on the poles and.
No, there is no, no statement that they're going five G. The question is, are they?
Oh, you made a statement that I thought they were, so I was just, wanted to see if I missed it in here.
No, that's the concern. Are, are they not telling us that?
Um, does Mass Access have an opinion on this?
On, on the, those particular state and federal programs?
On this?
They s-
On this Verizon?
I haven't asked them.
Okay.
So if I purchase a Verizon FiOS T V plan, but I use their wireless access, there's no P E grant in that?
No.
Even though I'm purchasing T V access?
Correct.
Is that a state level law we need to get changed?
It's a state level law that, that is dependent on a, on a federal, on the federal telecommunications law.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you say that again, Brian?
So my question, what, is, a lot of the I S Ps are going to, either you can get copper or fiber to your home, or you can use the same tech that your cell phones do now because it's gotten so much better. So my question was, you know, today, I have Verizon FiOS in my home, so I've got a hard line to the house. If I subscribe to a T V plan, you pay P E grant and everything else. But it sounds like if you subscribe to the wireless version of your service and get your T V through that, you might not be paying P E grant.
Correct.
That's weird.
Yeah. So it's a simple question, are they, is Verizon looking to do five G on the poles in Lakeville?
I don't know, but I can get an answer for you.
The letters are due by the nineteenth.
That's my only question, thank you. Otherwise, I think, uh, providing ser- service to places they haven't gotten to yet is a great idea.
Well, it just says to unserved and underserved residents, you know, in businesses. So have they already done an analysis, um, as to, you know, cause when I read this, you know, it's, it's access for, you know, unserved and underserved residents. So, you know, if you have residents that, um, you know, may not be able to afford the access, you know, I read that in here as that they're gonna be providing.
I do not, so.
Well, the, the, the state and federal program they mentioned are specifically for that purpose.
That, that it's just for?
Low income.
Yeah.
Underserved.
Underserved is a pretty broad term, though.
Yes. But I can't, I haven't supported, but it's, it's a question that should be asked before giving them approval to go ahead and do this. And we, they wind up putting five G on every other pole.
I can, I can reach out to someone that I talked to about previously, get you an answer.
It's kind of too bad they only sent it to us on February sixth, is it? Because this is something we could have also tossed over to the Cable Advisory Board to.
Yeah, they're.
Um, the chairman could not be here tonight, that's why I'm busy.
Um, I would also suggest if, um, Mass Access has an opinion on it, they are kind of the go-to.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, the nineteenth, that's, that just challenges me.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting.
So we'll just have to have, um, a quick.
You can make a contin- maybe a contingent vote of, I don't know, if it is five G, don't do it, I don't know.
I'm not sold that I wouldn't vote.
I don't know.
Access is access.
That's what I guess.
Because there's some people that would live in, I'm not saying for Lakeville, but in certain areas, there's like, my only option is company. And like, and they feel like they're getting mistreated by company and they would welcome the second company to have options and.
Options is what we want, right.
And it does say there's an income cap and some other things on there.
There was talk of, Jose probably knows way better, um, the, the government was trying to force like a twenty-five dollar plan or something like that for internet broadband internet access. And S C C was raising the definition of broadband.
Yeah, I'm not sure that ever went through.
Okay.
Well, um, I'll entertain a motion, um, to issue a letter of support to Verizon regarding Verizon FiOS, uh, broadband expansion.
So moved.
I hear a second. Well, I don't hear a second, so there's no action.
So they might not invest in us.
Were we gonna do that subject to getting this answer or no?
My understanding is that, I think they could still do this, it's just, it helps them get the grant over other towns, like, or other places, so.
So if Mr. Day is willing to revoice it and say.
I didn't make it, I s- I s-
Who did?
I so moved it.
Oh, you so moved it.
You so moved it, oh, um, I don't know.
Subject to the approval of the town administrator. So I would like Andrew to just get more information. And if there's something that he finds egregious, then we don't move forward with it. But if he finds all systems go, then we move forward.
Do you remember the guideline?
Um, gosh, I guess the guideline would be, um, if it severely impairs our ability to have cable access in the future.
Yeah.
And then everything else is pretty much acceptable.
I would suggest we come back and discuss a letter of support to the state and the feds to say, get with the times on the way you're doing P E grant, because people are moving to wireless access as a primary form.
They know, we've been talking about that for like fifteen years, um, and the, the states and the federal government has made no move on it. It's very unfortunate to see. I mean, we value very much our public access. Uh, I know all to- towns do. Um, it's one of those few things in life that actually gives insight into what's going on instead of, it obscures it with garbage. So, um, it, it's an important part of our government and our schools.
Maybe, um, our I T subcommittee, if they meet and put that on the agenda, could send a letter of recommendation to the Select Board.
I think that's Cable Advisory Board, Madam Chair. We'll defer.
In conjunction with, yeah. So was that the second line?
Yes, second, all right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Fabian, I.
Carboni, I.
And Dido, I.
Day, I.
Okay, fourteen. Good night, Jose, thank you. Discuss impossible vote on request from Board of Health to appoint Sofia DeCosta as the Assistant Board of Health Agent. Um, this motion would include that her term would be appointed through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we have, um, a letter here that the Lakeville Board of Health voted on February fifth to recommend to the Select Board the appointment of Sofia DeCosta as the Assistant Board of Health Agent. So I'll entertain a motion, um, to appoint Sofia DeCosta as the Assistant Board of Health Agent, um, with a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Uh, Fabian, I.
Carboni, I.
Day, I.
Yes, um, I have Sofia's equipment formance back at the office, so if you guys could come in and sign it, that'd be great.
Sure. We can do that. Okay, um, agenda item number fifteen. So we've gotten to that place now, um, where we need to schedule the next round of Select Board, um, member hours at the Council on Aging. So the next one we have, which is Valentine's Day, um, February fourteenth, then March fourteenth, April eleventh, May ninth, and June thirteenth. So does anybody have any?
Um, I can do February, March, cause I am up for reelections, so I don't know if I'll be here the rest of those months.
Okay, and I know Brenna's not here, but I know she enjoyed her time.
Mm-hmm.
At the senior center, so.
Well, she's up for reelection, well, I don't know if she's running or not, but maybe I can do, um, February and she can do March.
Okay, well, we'll put that in there and if she can't do it.
Maybe you can check with her and see.
Yeah.
Do you want to just hold off on the other ones?
Till after the election or?
Well, these three will still be here, yeah.
I'll take April eleventh.
Okay.
Can do May. Uh, actually, sorry, I can't, uh, June.
All right, Brian's got June.
I got May.
And Maureen's got May.
Okay.
Tic-tac-toe.
Okay.
Brian's got June?
I think so.
Okay. Excellent, so we can get this over to, to Laurie?
Yeah.
And, um, we'll work it amongst ourselves should something come up. And would you want to check off the rest of them, Maureen, so you know?
No, I only need to know.
Just yours.
Just about me.
Yeah, it's all about you. Okay, um, so our next meetings, um, from March and then April. So we have some suggested dates here. Uh, we're meeting on February twenty-fourth, which I would be announcing later on, but we, it is the twenty-fourth of February. Um, let's see. And then the next one would be the tenth of, of March and the twenty-fourth. Town Administrator is looking to hold budget meetings the week of March seventeenth.
That may change.
Okay, yes.
I will not be available at all from March nineteenth to twenty-ninth.
Okay, no, Maureen.
And likely the same for me from seventeenth to twenty-first.
So earlier the better.
More pressure. Yeah, push it up a little bit.
She's getting it done, Andrew, come on.
I don't think that'd be an issue, I just wanted to give myself a week, but we just dive into it that week.
No, I appreciate it and I know I don't have to be there for everything. I would like to be there for some a bit if I can, though.
Okay.
Okay, so is everybody good with the tenth?
Yep.
Check. Anybody else other than Maureen not available on the twenty-fourth? Cause that would be regular business, I think, on the twenty-fourth.
Looks good.
Is the twen- is the thirty-first out of? Question?
I can do either.
So was it twenty-fourth or thirty-first?
No, it just said twenty-fourth, I just threw the thirty-first out there.
Oh, okay, is it another one?
It has a full complement of the board. But then maybe the week of the twenty, I don't know, cause Maureen won't be here for that.
I won't.
All right, so you know what you're working with.
I might be able to come remotely, I have surgery, so I might be able to come remotely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you do eight.
If you do, um, March thirty-first, that does line up with April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth.
If you do thirty-first, I'm sure I can come remotely.
Okay.
And we could do the article discussion then, cause if we have more, it goes to three, on the thirty-first.
Mm-hmm, right? Yeah, remove.
A little behind here, no one like.
I'll do that for that.
Oh, we're not, we're not policing you on the.
Spitball at me or something.
Turning of the.
Andrew needs to.
Target.
A sign I can see.
I bet someone wrote it on Facebook.
Yeah.
Change the number. Oh, wait a minute, I just got it.
Andrew, you need a, you need a sign, like, like something like that, change the.
I know.
Or we just delegate that to him, but you're not usually in like, there's camera shot, right?
I don't think I am, no.
You know, in all honesty, I don't think he needs to do this, he's very busy taking notes.
Good times, good times. Okay, so we want to do the thirty-first?
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, so we'll do March thirty-first.
And if we could make that hybrid, that would be fantastic.
And then you'll work your budget around.
Yep.
The pre-seventeen and post-twenty-nine.
Yep.
So no twenty-fourth?
No twenty-fourth.
I was also gonna ask selfishly if the board entertained like five forty-five as a start time? Five thirty's just been really tough lately.
No, I like to see you guys running in like.
It's so mean.
Put that in the data bank, okay, remember that?
Running in here. I don't have a problem with five forty-five.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm, I know that.
I'm all for it.
Okay, all right, do you have an alternative to suggest?
All right, so.
Good, five forty-five.
Starting on the twenty-fourth of February, we're going to move our meeting time to five forty-five. Okay?
Appreciate it.
I know that would help a lot of residents too, cause some folks are like, I just can't get there. I don't.
And forgive me when I keep saying five thirty, cause I think I've been saying that for a very long time, so five forty-five. Okay. And then going into April, the seventh and the twenty-eighth, are those good?
Ah, the Select Board meeting my birthday.
The seventh would be a back, back need.
Tell you're gonna celebrate.
With thirty-first.
So you could do April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth, and that would be a two-week span in between. Well, the election is when? The election is election.
Fourth on the seventh?
Yeah, that'd be a little weird.
Is the election on the seventh?
No.
Okay, then you don't want the seventh.
Right.
So we'll make it the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, okay?
Okay.
All right, so not April seventh and not April, April fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. So just as a recap, March tenth, March thirty-first, April fourteenth, April twenty-eighth. We good?
Mm-hmm.
And I missed the part, can we try to get a couple of budget meetings in the twenty-fourth? Or the week of the twenty, I'm, the week of the twenty-fourth, or are you guys away away?
Maureen's away.
I'm away.
So it was either pre-seventeen or post-twenty-nine.
Okay. So we have the thirty-first as a regular meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
But now hybrid, hybrid.
Yeah, we usually have like, what, that week or two of like a whole bunch of meetings?
Like four nights.
Back to back to back.
Yeah, four nights, four nights.
Okay, Subcommittee Updates, um, Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Select Board Policy Subcommittee. So as I mentioned earlier, I've been working with, I had a discussion with Andrew and I told him that, um, I've had a couple of conversations with a couple of department heads, um, like the ambulance billing policy, so I asked the fire chief to take a look at that. Um, constables, why we have the number of constables that we do, how does the new post law affect all that? There's some quarry policies that I've talked to Lacy about, so, um, you know, if Andrew wants to sit in on these, he can, but I'm just trying to get preliminary information. How has this stuff changed? Like, if you read through the quarry policy, most of that is a function of H R now. So perhaps one option would be, um, we don't even need to have part of that policy anymore. So just working with a few people to do some like work. But I do just want to sit with Andrew to make sure we're both not working on some of the same policies, so.
Question for Leah, Madam Chair, for you. Um, when you were saying that we had separate quarry, um, policies, we did have separate quarry policies until twenty twenty, when we moved, um, fire and police under H R. Is that still happening, uh, that it's all combined, or did it split again?
Um, so it's basically the way the policy was written way back when. Um, and it just says, you know, this is how quarry will be done. And so a lot of that is just the function of.
Um, and it just says, you know, this is how quarry will be done, and so a lot of that is just the function of HR now. So I can see us as a board, these are some of the things that, you know, I'm like, okay, so what could it be that we might want to talk about? So, um, it may, may, um, come down to, does the board want to make a policy on if someone has, you know, some sort of not great driving record, as long as they're not driving a town vehicle?
Got it.
Or whatever.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, um, just like work with some of these department heads, um, just to figure out, is it still appropriate? Is it not appropriate? I mean, like the ambulance billing one says it'll be looked at every January. I don't even... I know the current chief looks at it, but for a while it wasn't... we had no increase in how many years, so we just need to make sure these are, um, current and not traipsing on what Andrew's working on, on his-
And that we were tracking them, because to your point, like if something's not being done one year, that, like, is it a policy at that point, or has, you know, has it gone from it?
Right, so we even need to be doing that.
Yeah, if it does need to be done, we're tracking it, we're saying, hey, all of our stuff is done on our policies, et cetera.
Right. And then what I'd really like to do with you, Maureen, because we do have to post the meeting, is for you and I to sit down and like come up with some of these scenarios, like, so we know that this totally is irrelevant now. So how do we want to, you know, either present it to the board, or, um, come up with scenarios, or?
I think that's a fair.
Yeah, so, um, and then I don't necessarily think it's for us to say yes or no to an opinion part of it. You know, like, I mean, in my opinion, it's the, um, police chief's job to oversee the constables, right? We do the appointments, but, so how much in, you know, the policy says there's going to be X number of appointments, so at some point, when things change, we need to be alerted to those changes. I don't even necessarily expect the town administrator to know some of that very specific information on, um, some of that stuff, so. But for example, we just had, um, a weather incident, and according to our weather policy, it's the chair that calls, so that's not really any mass general law around that, so that one there, I can see us just saying, this is the way it is. Do we want to leave it? Do we want to change it?
Was I supposed to do something?
You failed.
Did I miss my policy? What did I miss?
I was going to bring you in the loop if it was a serious enough thing.
Oh, so, so the select board is the, uh, the chair of the select board is the one that actually lets people know that Town Hall is closed for weather-related events. Um, whereas in, I would just call Franklin and say, should we be closed? And he would say, yes, and that's, I mean, so do we need a policy, or should it be?
It's very history of why it's that way, not just the TDA.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I'm sorry.
I tried to find out a long time ago, six years ago, and I could never really find the answer. Now, to my benefit and Lorraine's benefit, we live on pretty main drags. If our streets haven't been sanded or plowed, no one's going to work. But for someone who lives, you know, in a cul-de-sac or something, the main roads could be clear, so that's another thing, you know, that, um...
But who would know that better than?
Franklin.
Franklin.
Mr. Quo.
Yep.
But that's a, that's a, that's an example of a policy that really isn't based in mass general law in any way.
Yeah.
So we can either just say, yes, let's continue this, no, let's change it, and if we're going to change it, how are we going to change it?
Yeah.
So, and I think, Maureen, you and I can probably come up with a couple of pretty objective, um, alternatives, so. But anyways, getting lots of work done on that.
Sweet.
In case I don't get reelected, I can just give someone the whole binder, Maureen.
Oh, I love a binder.
And, um, I believe you handed out a couple of-
I did. These aren't old policies, these are new policies. So this isn't something work, being worked on that's an existing, um, thing. This is just net new to the town. Um, there was two of them. One of them, it's an old favorite. I like to bring it back every once in a while, everyone flower, have it around. Um, it's a code of conduct policy, and it doesn't just apply for select board, it applies for every board and committee. And it's all about maintaining, um, civil discourse and, uh, making sure you're not speaking for the board, in type of events, or, you know, in social media, all those type of things. So just wanted to bring this for first reading for everyone, and then we'll put it on as an actual agenda item, um, to talk about at another point, but I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to look it over and then mark it up and have their questions, um, and then-
There is some, and I just took a look at this when we got here tonight, but there is some overlap with emission statement that all the department heads had worked on.
Would that be the ICMA Code of Conduct?
It was something that all the department heads had worked on. I don't have it.
I remember.
It's hanging in every office.
Yeah, but what's the overlap?
And it does have a lot of this stuff in there, but again-
But these are boards and committees, like, as opposed to?
Well, this is supposed to be town-wide, so we'll have to compare and see what parts are... But this is for this policy, right?
Yeah, this is for appointed and elected officials.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So all members of town boards, committees, and commissions.
Yep, and that one's supposed to be town-wide. Staff, elected, everybody, so, um, okay.
The challenge with some of these, though, is like, it's the policy, but what's the punishment?
Well, that's-
Like, you can have any elected person say, "I'm elected, I can do what I want."
That's a good point, like, you know, violations may result in removal from assignments, public censure, or other appropriate actions as determined by the Lakeville Select Board. So, you know, public censure, does it have anything, you know, is it just, you know, their force majeure, like it's-
But we can't remove a different elected board members from their role.
No, no, nope. We can make recommendations, though, um, we can have discussions on it, but it, they're going to be the ones signing the code of conduct, and they're all subject to it, it won't be voluntarily. It wouldn't be like, I'm not subject to this, everyone else in town is, but I understand your-
We've got personalities that might say, I don't, I don't have to.
If it's a, if it's a bylaw, you could put it in as a bylaw. Then they'd never be able to undo it, but I just think it's a very important part that since 2020, um, there's been an increase in just really, really difficult treatment of people, like back and forth. And it has increased and it has come to a fever pitch in some cases. I want to see that we're calling it out when we're seeing it, and it's not the norm. And it's something that we're able to talk about in a respectful way and relate to each other using kind of the same set of rules. So it's the goal. I know it's been here before in different forms, but I'm hoping this board will, uh, come to some type of agreement on, at least in part, making some of these things part of our everyday commitment as being board members for the town. And then the second thing I-
Is this a quick question?
Yeah.
The ethics, um, ethics training with 30 days, that's controlled by the town clerk, right?
That is controlled with the town clerk.
So I just wonder if you say like, in accordance with town clerk requirement?
We could do that.
In case something changes later. Sorry, I just stuck at it for the rest of the year.
Good feedback. Um, but I know Tracy used to have to chase people regularly that didn't attend board meetings. She keeps attendance of people to know, you know, how many board meetings and-
I used to.
Yes.
We did away with that during COVID.
Yeah, but it was one of those things where we would have people that would run for a board, and they would never be there. Like, these are important things, if you're going to show up and, and be all that, like, we should know what we're expecting.
Have that in our appointment.
Lil's new appointment thing.
No, our old one, I believe we have that in there about attendance, um, lack of attendance could be cause for removal.
Yeah.
We do have an appointed policy.
Right, I believe, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember that.
Um, and the other one is the Select Board Policy on Utilization of Town Council. Um, in the last few months on this board, I've heard multiple members reference their conversations with town council. And I've, I'm never able to fully understand what the question was that was asked and what the answer was that was given, because it's usually a verbal conversation, you know, it's usually a phone call or a face-to-face. I would like to know if there is something that we're basing some judgment on or some knowledge. I would like to know what that is. Um, I, I think, I think we utilize town council probably maybe a little too routinely and without being able to share it, so just for context, um, Andrew, I don't know if it's still there, but I used to keep a book, um, and I, it was Reed's tradition, I'd keep a book of all decisions of town council. Because invariably, new boards would come in and they'd have the same questions. So a board member would come to me, they'd say, "Hey, Maureen, you know, do we know anything about this?" My first step would be going through the book and seeing if there was anything related to what that person was asking for, what town council, you know, their decision was, and how that came. And I know that it's gone away from that, you know, in, in the last few years, but it was such a great tool, um, and it allowed people to not have to go to town council on things, and it gave them a deeper understanding to ask better questions if we still had to go around town council. Um, and then there's been some instances where there's been more than one board member talking to town council, which I, I don't see as a value, um, and I understand there's various reasons that someone might do it, but having two members talk to town council without the benefit of having a meeting with the rest of the members in executive session, um, I, I would, goes right up, goes right up for me. It's not, it's not something I think is indicative of a really healthy board dynamic, and it should go away. And, you know, individual conversations happen, but I would like to see town council give their answer. Like, here, here's the answer I gave, um, and that way, we're all subject to being able to understand what, what was asked and what was said. Because I can't tell you how many times I sat in a room with a selectman and had a conversation with town council, and then time comes to the meeting and it sounds a little different than how town council had put it, because they're putting their own interpretation on what town council had interpreted. So being able to know what the answers are, I think that benefits all of us.
Two quick thoughts. One, I think sending the initial question is easy. It's when you have the discussion with them, where they give you an answer, and that sparks like a corner case you had thought of, and you're like, oh, what if the, what if the, what if blah, like, logging that and getting that back is a little more difficult. I'd also be curious, we've had a number of times where something gets on the agenda, it's Thursday or Friday, we get the packet, we reach, we scramble to reach out. Do we just say at the next meeting Monday, like, I, I just want to table this because there's not enough information to answer?
Well, I don't know.
Or I'm not comfortable because I haven't gotten council's opinion, or we need council's opinion.
I just, well, I think better vetting of, of questions and fuller answers is always a good thing, but I have no issue if town council wants to send their opinion on a matter to the board. Like, if you call town council and they, they summarize, because that's what I used to do. I used to make them summarize what they had told me, and so I could put it in the notebook. So if you're calling town council, I want you to summarize your decision, and instead of just sending it to one member, they could send it to everyone, because it's a legal opinion.
So I can definitely see the reason why the chair would have more, um, need to talk to council. Whether something is relevant for an agenda, you know, um, direction on things with the town administrator, so I don't necessarily know that the chair position could, you know, follow this to a teat- especially when it-
But the chair has no special rights when it comes to knowledge.
No, the chair doesn't, but when it comes to, like, should something go on an agenda or not, you know, um, is it ready to go on an agenda, or whatever, they need guidance, so that's kind of tough to constrain the chair. I do agree with you that, and I remember Rita would literally forward town council's response and with the question, so you saw the question and you saw the answer, and she would forward it to everyone. And again, you know, everyone knows better than to sort of, you know, start chiming in. But, um, you know, I'd be really curious, I know, um, I think I've called town council twice since September and worked through Bob once on the, um, 160 Bedford Street, which was also in September. And the last time I called, Michelle Randazzo, was because of things I heard in the school union negotiations, so, so I felt like, you know, um, so I'd just be curious, how much are we all reaching out to town council? Is it really even such a big deal?
Yeah, but if, so if you reach out to town council, devil's advocate, you get an opinion from town council, you come armed with that opinion to a meeting because you have legal stand to understand, you know, what that means, and none of us do, I don't know that that benefits the town.
All right, so I know that when I've been chair and that did happen, I would ask the town administrator to make a summary, because again, to your point, when I'm making a summary, it could be influenced by me, which could be breaking open meeting law, because that's my opinion now. So, and I did that many times. I have plenty of emails where, you know, I would have to, we had to talk about all kinds of things, some complaints that would come in and whatever, and I would always say, you know, whatever we know, the other two board members should know.
Yeah, but to my, to my earlier point, I don't always feel that that is kind of what ends up happening, and not through malfeasance of any sort, just through, like, oh yeah, I forgot you weren't there, or, you know, or that didn't seem really relevant, but it would have seemed, seemed really relevant to me, because it's an important point. So no one has to agree with everything, just-
Because you piqued my curiosity, I'm really curious what the legal bills look like since April. Can we get copies?
Yeah, yeah.
And see, you know.
And I did, and I did put that on there about just being able to review them.
I mean, it's also like, some of us work on different committees and, you know, like last year, Brian was on the, what was the zoning one that you were on?
The 40R, wait, the committee?
Yeah, wasn't it that one? So I mean, just out of doing that, they may need to call council, so.
Sure, but that's going to be codified somewhere in a result or, or something, there'll be some type of evidence. I just worry of all the knowledge just lost through, you know,
I mean, I, I almost-
The grand oral tradition of calling town council.
Everyone should just have a best practice of sharing what they learn, um, versus trying to-
But again, to your point, sharing what they learn comes with unintentional bias. It comes with some interpretation, um, as opposed to getting it from the source. And sharing it is not putting it in a binder and keeping it for future reference. Uh, I just, uh, I, I think we can do it better, and I think transparency towards the other board members. However, there are times where I don't think the other board members should be involved, and that's of questions of, ooh, am I, you know, would this be an ethics violation, those type of things that are strictly personal to that person's role as a select board member, but not relevant to the others. I think those are, you know, completely, should be off limits, and those are, you know, um, questions that should be only answered in between, because that's very personal to the person. But, uh, as far as knowledge, I think if, if it's something one member of the board should know, I think it's something that every member of the board should know.
I have a possible solution for, for this, so we're getting Dropbox for like a couple of different committees in town. Now you can like lock, like, say you five and me in one, one column, so no one else could see it. And I can attach all the legal opinions that I get in there, so you guys can always just-
But you'd have to get them.
Go in and, yeah, just save an email.
Yeah, but, I mean, most often, we should be working through the town administrator.
Right.
Wouldn't be a heavy lift and, because sometimes when you forward an email, sometimes you don't, I send like a million emails, so people probably don't read them all, or?
Oh, no.
I think this would be an easier way to like go and catalog and say, these are all the opinions the town has.
Yeah, because again, it was great, and it, like, if there's, something came up, usually it was zoning related. Like, if something came up and I could have something, and I could just turn right to it, look if there's anything on it, and then ask some really good questions, like I was super knowledgeable about it, because I already read up on it, but, um, yeah. But those are my two that I'd like everyone to think about as part.
Okay, so I'm adding these in to- Okay, so I'm adding these into policies, right?
Yes.
Can we get like word versions of these so we can make comments on them?
You can. You can, I will send word versions to Andrew and then he can send it to you.
Excellent. I think I have all the policies, Brian, but they're not in any order.
No, those older ones definitely.
Yeah, those, because there were, there's some policies included in that folder, if you want to call it that, that we've never even approved, so.
And I'm sure there's also policies that Christina had on the shared drive. And then I have policies in my H drive. So, so I don't know how.
That's got to be fixed.
Yep. And he, he's got to fix that. So. All right. All right, Fire Station Building Committee update. So, um, we know that our, um, exclusion vote has passed. Um, we actually, the Fire Station Building Committee met, uh, that Wednesday night after. Um, so right now, uh, we're not meeting again until the first week in March. Our OPM and architect are putting together the, um, the construction packets of bidding stuff. I know there's something that I was unfamiliar with, there's a pre-approval.
Pre-qualification of contractors.
Thank you, pre-qualification. And I believe that's a, a pretty extensive and time-consuming process, so.
It's very arduous, yep, very tough, yeah.
Right, because if any projects that's over, was it 10 million?
10 million.
That this is an acquired through national law.
Yeah, usually there's all sorts of timelines statutorily you've got to follow. And it typically takes two or three months to, to do it, unfortunately, good federal laws.
So, um, I can also just, you know, piggyback, um, on what Andrew was saying in town administrator reports. That, uh, you know, now we have an opportunity that we have the funding approved. We can start to really look at opportunities for, um, you know, for grants. Um, or other funding sources to offset, um, you know, the expenses on that. So, and I know the water line was one. I know you looked out, uh, looked into the infrastructure bill.
Yep, and then there's Community One Stop. We could run that water line down 18 if you wanted to.
Madam Chair, um, is this also inclusive of a stoplight there?
Yeah, go back into my lines, I do not believe, I think that there was a contingency built in in case it was what needed. But the traffic study indicated that it wasn't needed.
Hmm, is it?
I'm not sure.
Well, I don't know, I'd like everyone to consider, um, because we have a police and fire. Um, it's not just, um, fire trucks that will go out or police cars. They're both exiting from the same area.
Police typically are out patrolling, not responding to the station.
I guess. Hmm, depends what's up, eight o'clock, four o'clock.
But I know that this has come up, this conversation came up, but I'm trying to recall in my, my brain, but I think that.
But it's supposed to be free from the state to get the light there. But I believe we have to, but I believe we have to pay for the design. Is the way that it goes. And the design, last, last count for the design on Bridge Street, it still hasn't happened, is like 225, I think.
It's, it's definitely a couple mil.
Oh, for the, yeah, it would be, uh, 3 million for the light and like 225 or 300,000 just for the design of the light. Because it's very special to design a light, they need to make sure they get it.
They have to handle the easements too, right?
Um, it's Route 18, um, and we own all of the stuff on the side, so.
All they have on Bridge, Bridge.
Oh, Bridge Street, yeah, yeah. Um, I don't know, 20, 2019 should be long enough to get easements. Yeah, um, but.
I know that there was discussion about, um, the way that the, uh, building was, you know, the site plan, where it was located because of having clear access. So people coming down this way and people coming this way would actually see the station as the apparatuses were coming out. If there was a concern that it was closer to the road, um, they might not necessarily have that opportunity to see.
Have you commuted down that road at 5 o'clock at night?
It's no fault.
4:30.
It's chock or block full. If we don't have a light, and I know there, there's going to be dissent on that. We don't have a light there, we could have a gridlock going on or, you know. I, I just have big concerns over the safety of having both fire and police coming out of the same area at the same time. Multiple buildings, multiple people, multiple vehicles.
I'll certainly bring that back to the discussion.
I appreciate it. Because again, you're not, you're just, you're saying fire department, but I'm saying police and fire.
I hear you.
I was just gonna.
Old Colony, oh.
No, I was just saying fire, I had forwarded to Andrew, um, I've done this the last three time administrators, sorry. Um, the municipal vulnerability grant again.
That we ran out of, it, it, we're out of compliance.
Mm-hmm.
What?
Yeah.
Okay.
It came up in a meeting. Just came up in a meeting last week or the week.
Oh, the one I missed?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic.
When we had the joint meeting with the planning board. Yep, we were just out of compliance.
All right.
About six months.
Never mind about that.
I did find out you can still apply for action grants when it's inactive. So we, we still could.
Well.
So you can go back to your thought.
All right, back on, um, just in general, because there was, there's, there's precedent in the state of that being used to build new fire stations. So like with us, having an existing one, like not itself being in a flood zone, but surrounded by a flood zone. And, you know, not being able to get to your apparatus is a bit of a problem. It seemed like it wasn't too far of a stretch to say, hey, look, we're improving our vulnerability by putting it in a better place and not having to buy a duck boat.
Not only that, we're removing the possibility of contaminants coming in the waterway for the washing of the fire trucks and the location that we were washing them in. And, and stormwater runoff.
We could do the same with DPW. You once spoke of a washing station.
I did speak of a washing station. You know, I love a good washing station for boats and vehicles contained.
Okay, any updates on the Old Colony?
Um, not at this time, there was supposed to be meeting tonight, but they actually moved it to the 19th. Um, so I'm probably not going to be able to make the 19th due to a work commitment, but I'll follow up if there's anything new.
Okay. All right, I have tea.
Uh, we had our first meeting, so on February 4th, we all met here. Um, it's a large group, but everybody got along nicely. Um, kind of just went over the original charge. We decided that we would aim for the second Tuesday of every month, not that we necessarily need it, but we just pencil it in. And if there was business to discuss, we would. Um, everybody was reopened the idea of helping the select board or anybody else that needed investigation or suggestions. Um, while Natalie being a member of it was there from Green River to answer all sorts of questions. Uh, it was a good just first meeting for people to get a lot of like knowledge about what's, what's the state of the town right now. Uh, we did go over the, um, the cybersecurity report that was completed by Cyber Trust Massachusetts. We do finally have that. Uh, they were all very pleased with the results and we all kind of were in agreement of, yep, these are good places to focus on like for year one or so. Um, that did have to be done in executive session under reason number four, security. And actually the documents, we also, um, town council informed us that the documents are also exempt under state law. One of the conditions that actually says cybersecurity in it. So those are, we have to likely be redacted if ever requested. But great first meeting. Um, I was with a chair, Kristen Howard was with a vice chair. And, um, likely on those reports themselves, I know Cyber Trust would like to do a presentation of the select board as well. So we'll define a time that she'll be supposed to do that.
Excellent, productive.
Yay.
All right, Brenda's not here for communication and community outreach, um, citizens.
Oh, I had a question on communication and community outreach that it was actually for all of the board. Um, with everything that we're all working on, it seems to me that we should all be, when we're done, connecting with the communication and community outreach in order to not just do what we are tasked with, but to share it with the public. So I was just thinking that.
Isn't the challenge right now that the committee doesn't exist yet?
It is true.
In, well, a member still exists of the committee, a member still exists, but.
Is that a quorum? One, number one?
A quorum of one. I'm not sure, I'm not su, well, they don't have to.
You know, there's the community newsletter too.
Yes, there's a community newsletter too. But, um, however we end up getting it out, I would like to just impose on board members that us knowing it exists is not good enough. And that whatever we're doing, we should make sure that people of Lakeville know what it is as well. Because a lot of times we do really great things and it just goes unnoticed because no one's talked about it or no one's put it anywhere, um, so.
Well, I know that, um, Lacey had sent out her email, um, looking for information for the upcoming March newsletter. So I say, send it out. IT Subcommittee met for the first time.
Yeah. Action item.
Uh, Citizens Academy Subcommittee, um, we have not met, we were going to meet, um, but low and behold, our MMA, um, is holding a virtual meeting about, um, Citizens Academy Subcommittee. And funny, one of the, um, towns that I had mentioned, Danvers, uh, the, the person that had put this together is actually part of the panel for this. So, uh, I figured we would sit and go through that and then, um, we'll schedule a meeting right after that.
Um, did we decide who we wanted to add for the third, it was Andrew, right? Andrew, you just didn't have enough to do, so you want to come hang out?
No, it's fun, I'm looking forward to it.
Madam Chair, can I just ask the board, when I get like invitations like that, do you want me? I don't want to blast you with quants and stuff, so send it if I think it's of interest to you guys.
Because I don't always, I try to stay relevant with the MMA, uh, and the things that they have coming up. But I miss things sometimes, so yes, I think it would be great if you could just, you know, send it out. If you're interested, let me know, I'll bridge it to you or something like that, so.
So to swing back to an earlier thing, Andrew's P card policy. One of the MMA events I attended, um, it was like a finance committee seminar they held. We were all told like, oh, you can do a PO and we'll charge you after the fact. And we got to the front of the line like, yeah, where's your credit card? They wouldn't take it anymore, so we had to pay personal card and then submit reimbursement requests to the town.
Lovely, lovely.
Other, other reason for.
No, I think that's happened to me before, that's why I can't propose on it.
Great, um, any new business coming before the board? Um, I don't have anything that wasn't, okay, old business. Um, we have the American Recovery Plan Act. Does anybody know what that's, that's ARPA? Because we didn't put it on here as a acronym.
Andrew had his little.
The violation of the open meeting law.
That is correct.
I'd like to fill anything out.
Everything's out. Yeah, so you had it on your, um, your report and it was a little over 200,000, but you were looking and hopeful that they would be doing a regional initiative, right?
Yeah, regional communications, public safety.
As far as the projects are concerned, are we, um, I know they're still working on the, the old townhouse, correct?
Old townhouse, um, the pavilion, we'll put notes a bit of parking lot at Ted Williams shortly. COA is pretty much completed, they're just doing file internals, probably going to have a ribbon cutting, so. You'll all be invited to that when it happens.
Excellent. Yeah, good stuff.
Any updates on, uh, their pond water line or is it just the season is done for now?
It's pretty much done, I don't know what's left, I think it's like 99% done. I think they have put the water, um, meter in, I think that might be it.
Oh, I have a question on that. Are we embarking on a plan with the parks? On what to do with that swath of land that has been carved there?
Yeah, we did a, um, sight walk, I think it was the last, two weeks ago, with the designer, Parks, myself, Mike, Ellis. Um, yeah, we did like a whole walk around the whole place and they're going to try to encapsulate that big swath of land that they cut through. Potentially walking trails, maybe something else. But they're, they're going to be designing that over the next four to eight weeks. So they'll have like a fancy plan to look at.
If something good can come out of something bad, that's, you know, the best that you can hope for in a situation like that. I'd love to hear of more walking trails for the people of Lakeville to be bop around and it's pretty wide open though.
All right, um, um, are we done with old business? No, no, a few had something. Um, so I do know that the Middleborough Gas and Electric person was at that meeting on the 23rd at the Parks. I remember we approved the electric charging stations. Um, why didn't they get done? Does anyone know why they didn't get done?
I saw that letter, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw that.
They claimed we never signed a contract.
But I saw that we did.
We did. It was all, we did it at a meeting, the person was here.
Yep.
So, okay. And then I know there was a discussion that night, but I'm, they, I thought they approached us about putting it at Ted Williams.
They did.
Um, so I don't know why ideas came from that meeting to locate them here or elsewhere or at the new fire station, but am I, am I on the right page?
Yep.
Couple at Town Hall and a couple at Ted Williams, right? Nothing's changed.
Nope.
No. Parks that night seemed like against them and was like, well, can't we put them at the fire station? Can't we put them at the police station like anywhere but down there?
Yep.
Um, it was the first I'd heard those recommendations.
I mean, I honestly didn't recall and I could have forgotten that it was supposed to be 24-hour access because technically the park isn't 24-hour access. Um, but I'm sure the police patrolling will know the difference between a hoodlum and someone sitting there at the charging station with an out-of-state license plate or track for his license.
Who says they can't be both?
You're absolutely correct.
Some EV hoodens out there.
But didn't it sound like he was saying that they had to reapply for the money now? I mean, I, I thought it was a done deal, we have all the paperwork, that it was kind of a done deal.
All the paperwork was done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lost in transmission apparently.
Okay.
Another one of those moments. Okay, um, so we have a couple of correspondence here. Uh, I'll leave off with the letter from the Carver Select Board, uh, to the Lakeville Select Board. Um, on behalf of the Town of Carver and the Carver Select Board, I am writing to express our gratitude to the Town of Lakeville for your steadfast partnership and support over the years in serving the needs of our animals through the animal shelter. Through your collaboration, we have been able to provide a safe and nurturing environment for countless animals, offering them the care they needed. It is partnerships like ours that make a lasting difference. At this time, Carver will be utilizing the services of another neighboring community and will not be renewing their shelter agreement. Once again, thank you for being such an integral part of the journey. Um, Glenn Cannon, Town Administrator. Okay, um, and then the Department of Public Utilities has a memo here, uh, looking for, um, what is it? I just lost my train of thought. Uh, pole attachments and conduit access of public rights, right, rights of way. Um, Andrew, can you elaborate on this a little more? Um, I read it and it just, yeah, I got nothing.
I think it's just something they send out, um, because they have to essentially, um. Yeah, I think they, when they, anytime they make changes in the right way, like clearing or changes, they have to let us know.
Okay, before they actually enact?
Yeah.
So if there's any, anybody looking for comments, um, or if anybody has comments or on the data.
Madam Chair, yes, on page three, um, we establish a deadline of February 18th for interest of stakeholders request to be added to the electronic distribution list going forward.
Okay.
So I guess the board asks, do you want to be on the electronic distribution list?
Dying.
You know what, what's another email for us?
Sure, why not?
15, yes, could you please add it?
It just came in electronically.
That would be great, yeah.
I know there was some language that came out, I think it was a DLS bulletin about double poles, you know, the safety of having-
Two poles.
The two poles. I know there was something that came out, I think it was just this week. Yeah, so I'm sure this is referencing that.
We also had a letter in here from Rise and Bios Program changing. So the WWDP Shop HQ, which is Channel 46 and 546, changed to WWDP to be determined which features comedy programming. Okay. I also have something here from the chief that was shared with us, but it's a letter from the chief to Rainham, Berkeley, Freetown and Middleborough Fire Departments. It's a letter expressing the gratitude of the members, from the members of the Lakeville Fire Department and the leadership of the Town of Lakeville for their fire department's recent mutual aid response to the Conway Farm Fire on January 23rd, 2025. The personnel performed at a high level and provided essential functions throughout the entire entirety of the incident. The department enjoys a longstanding partnership and, you know, just to continue to save lives jointly. They're very grateful for this partnership and the execution of the mutual aid. So I thank the chief for, you know, sending that out to our surrounding communities because I know that we are working together.
I have to be going up Southwood Street that that farm is on the night it happened, heading towards Corybrook. And it was impressive, the amount of apparatus that just suddenly like appeared out of nowhere and running the tanker trucks back and forth, so. Definitely that could have been a lot worse had all these towns not showed up to help.
The communication between each fire department and each town has increased so much over the last 20-plus years compared to where it was. It's, it's just amazing how collaborative everyone has really become, so. Much thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:02.
So move.
Second. Move, Davey and I, our bony eye?